School District 67 Board of Education for November 19th, 2019. May have a roll call, please, Eileen.
Mr. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Chung?
Here.
Mrs. Levert?
Here.
Mrs. Sands?
Here.
Dr. Lemke?
Here.
Mr. Engeland?
Here.
Mr. Vorkowski?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you all for coming. I state the obvious when I say the past month has been a trying time for all of us. But from at least one perspective, it has also been a time that has made me unbelievably proud. And that is what I want to focus on tonight, and I want to express deep gratitude to the people that made that occur. In my comments last month, I mentioned that this board has a core value of being student-centric. We strive to keep students at the center of every important decision that we make. While students did not cast any votes for the seven board members sitting before you, nor did students pay $1 of taxes to our community, our students' safety and well-being is the single highest priority that we have, and the education they receive follows closely behind. Whether we are deciding on how many dollars to spend on our new science labs, or making extremely difficult personnel decisions, our student-centric focus is a tenet that I personally hold on to tightly, and I know this is true for my fellow board members. The past month has proven to me beyond any doubt that being student-centric is not solely a core value of this board; rather, it is a core value of our entire school district. Being student-centric is not a core value of our school district because I say so as the board president, nor because the board as a whole has deemed it to be so. No, it's a core value because the people who work here, the teachers and the administrators, live that core value every day. And that has been demonstrated in an incredible manner over the past month. I'd like to first recognize the teachers. They lost their building leader, their principal, their mentor, their friend, and they don't even know why. We have given them no answers, both due to privacy laws and at Mr. Cardamone's direct request. They are grieving, upset, confused, and likely have many more emotions, none of which are positive. Yet our teachers show up to work every day, and they continue to deliver outstanding education to our students. This is not easy to do, as our teachers are human beings with human emotions, just like the rest of us. But our teachers are incredible professionals as well. They once again have demonstrated to me that they are indeed the best group of teachers in the land. To the teachers, on behalf of the board, I say thank you. You have served the students wonderfully in an incredibly difficult time, and you have made us very proud. In addition to the teachers, I would like to recognize the administration, as they also play an extremely important role in helping the district move forward. I particularly want to recognize our superintendent, Mike Simmick, and our deputy superintendent, Rebecca Jenkins. Mike and Rebecca have been attacked by many people, none of whom know all the details of what actually transpired. In the face of this criticism, both Mike and Rebecca have held their heads high. They have not only soldiered on, but they have continued to do outstanding work for our school district, supporting the students, the staff, and the community. They have met with many of their critics face-to-face, and they have listened to the unfounded attacks silently, not being permitted to respond with the truth, ironically respecting Mr. Cardamone's privacy over their own well-being. More importantly, they have continued to focus on delivering what is best for the students, including supporting the teachers to the best of their abilities. That support has been a major focus for both of them over the past month. I am proud and grateful to Mike and Rebecca for their continued excellent work for our students. Before I conclude, there are two separate but related topics that I want to touch upon. First, as I stated last month, our process was not perfect, even while the correct outcome was reached. As I also stated, this board will be examining every step of the process with an eye towards continuous improvement. That process review work has begun and will continue in earnest. I only mention this so no one thinks that it has been overlooked. It has not been forgotten, nor is it being ignored by the board. Second, I'd like to mention my fellow board members. The six board members sitting alongside me are smart, thoughtful, and extremely independent. Those who follow this board closely know that our votes are not always unanimous and do not always follow the administrators' recommendations. In numerous cases, recommendations from our administrative team have been tabled or modified prior to even coming to a vote. My fellow board members listen intently, analyze information carefully, ask tough questions, and then they each vote their own conscience. They don't vote one way or another to please me or the superintendent, nor do they cast votes to appease their neighbors and friends. They vote for what they individually believe to be best for our students and our school district. The vote that was taken last month was another example of this. Seven separate community members, elected by their peers in the community, analyzing the actual facts of the case, asking many tough questions, and ultimately arriving at their own decision independently. I'm proud of each one of them for their courage to be independent, and it is a privilege to serve with each of them. But process reviews and board member courage are not my focus tonight. My focus tonight is to reinforce that students have been and continue to be at the forefront of this school district's priorities, and to recognize the people who are living that core value every day in an incredible manner in spite of very difficult circumstances, specifically our teachers, our staff, our administrators, Deputy Superintendent Rebecca Jenkins, and Superintendent Mike Simmick. To each of you, on behalf of this board, thank you. We are grateful for your continued outstanding work. That concludes the president's report, and we now move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Vorkowski. I'd like to begin by recognizing a number of honor choir students. Mr. Gray sent out an email earlier this month congratulating the following sixth- and seventh-grade students who have been selected to perform at the American Choral Directors Association Regional Convention in Milwaukee this March. These students completed a challenging audition process and will join singers from 10 states to perform a concert in front of over 1,000 choir directors. Emmy and Luke Chichester, Gracie Clausen, Caroline Koval, Shalini Krishnaswamy, Lexi Mckewecki, and Maddie Phillips. Congratulations to each of them, and also to Mr. Gray. Tonight, the board will act on a recommendation to accept bids on renovating our 5 through 8 science labs. This has been a long time coming. I'd like to thank Renee Fitzsimmons, and also all of our science teachers for their continued engagement to make this project feasible and affordable while not giving up on the aspirational aspects of the project. Last year, our bids came in at prohibitively high rates. This was a trend in school construction in this area, but that did not make it any less vexing, as expectations were put on hold and some work had to be redone or reconsidered. This year, because we were able to be very early to market on our bids, and also because of the flexibility of our staff to allow construction crews to begin demolition during spring break, our bids came in significantly lower than last year and within the parameter set by the board. This also means that our students will now be able to walk into newly renovated science labs next fall. We changed a few aspects of the lab to bring the cost down, but didn't give up on the essential educational and inspirational aspects of the new labs. Again, thanks to Renee and all of our science teachers for their faith and continued engagement in what's been a long and windy road to success. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Questions or comments from the board for our superintendent? We now come to public participation. The Board of Education welcomes public attendance and participation at all of our meetings. In a moment, we will open our first public participation time for those interested in offering comments to the board. We do list a second public participation item on our agenda following our board committee and liaison reports. That time is generally used for comments relating to those reports and new business. Before we open public participation, I'd like to review the standard procedures for public comment. These guidelines are designed to maximize participation and allow all interested parties the opportunity to express their thoughts. Interested speakers should come to the podium and please state their name and address. So that as many people as possible have an opportunity to speak, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. The board clerk will remind you when you are near your time limit. Comments should not be redundant, and should be directed to the board. We ask that you refrain from clapping after each comment in order to preserve time for all speakers. Everyone has a right to be heard respectfully. This is the board's opportunity to listen, and while our inclination is often to engage in two-way dialogue, we will not respond to questions at this time. Detailed questions posed to the board will be taken under advisement. If you have any letters or other written materials, they should be handed to the board clerk, Eileen Fowler, for the public record. We plan on taking public comment tonight for approximately 15 minutes. I'd now like to open public comment. If anyone would like to address the board, please go to the podium.
Hello? Good evening. My name is Lori Rose. I'm a Lake Forest resident, the proud parent of a Deer Path Middle School graduate, and a former member and officer of the Lake Forest Schools District 67 Board of Education. As an initial matter, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the board for your leadership. You serve, as I did, for thousands of hours as unpaid volunteers. Despite your sincere desire for communication and transparency, many of the complex and nuanced issues you are compelled to address contain legally protected information that cannot and should not be shared with the public. The board table represents a lonely island, a place where troubling information may not legally be shared with spouses, family, friends, coworkers, or even with each other outside of a proper meeting. Like many matters which require legal confidentiality, these matters weigh upon those who must consider them. As an attorney, I am only too familiar with the impact of such mandated confidentiality. There is a considerable degree of stress involved in being required to withhold this type of information. It is a stress you may not relieve through the support of others. I salute you. And yet, despite the difficulty of your task, there are those who feel justified as they jeer, swear, harass, and interrupt you as you seek only to fulfill the oath you swore to uphold. Tonight, I thank you and address those who seek to impede you by asking our community for the right to civil dialogue during the public participation section of these meetings. Despite the sense of rancor and bullying which pervades our political landscape at present, I believe Lake Forest is better than that. And tonight, I also address the public and ask them to give you the respect you deserve, regardless of their views about your deliberations and decisions. And now I come before you as the president of the League of Women Voters-
Thank you. Your three minutes are up. Can you conclude your comments? Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Lori. Would anyone else like to address the board? Thank you. Seeing none, we move on to...feel free.
It's not planned, and I usually don't come up here because I'm too emotional, and I missed my last two opportunities. And I've had your kids, and I love your kids, but I would just wish that last board member, last time we were here, that one of you would have just said, "Yeah, we do not accept Tom Cardamone's resignation." That's all I was looking for, and I felt you, Jeff. I felt you coming. That's all I needed, like, somebody, somebody was on our side, one of you. And it feels like you're all together, and I just wanted some support, and I feel like I don't have your support. I've been a teacher, a mother, living in this district. I know Tom's gone, and I know you think you feel our pain, but you don't. You don't. I do. And I'm living it. It's affecting me. It's affecting my life. And we're going to sail through, of course, because that's what we do as teachers. But I can look you all in the eye, and you weren't there for us, and I still don't feel like you're there for us. You could have been there at the last meeting, just one of you say, "Yeah, we want Tom to come back," one of you, but you all stuck together, and it hurt me, and I just can't...I'm trying to get past it, and I'm trying to be professional, which I will be for our students, for our children, but I'm still hurting. And I know we're not supposed to talk about Tom Cardamone anymore, but come to Deer Path, and we're surviving, and we will, because that's what we do, but I'm still feeling the pain. And I know a lot of people are here, and we're crying, and we're still hurting, and you can't change anything, but I just wish, like I said, that somebody stood up and said, "Yeah, let's not accept his resignation. He's not going to come back anyway," but somebody stand up and say it. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board?
Hi, I'm Karen Pedersen, and I apologize, my voice is not itself. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but with Lorraine standing up, it just reminded me that we all know we've been on airplanes before, and the flight attendants tell us, you know, "Put your mask on before you put your mask on your child or the children around you." And I think that's what our faculty at DPM is feeling, is that we need to be taken care of so we can take care of the kids. And of course, as Lorraine said, we are taking care of your kids. We are taking care of these kids in the best way we can, but we also need to feel like we're being taken care of. So that's just what I want to share. Thank you, Lorraine, for speaking that out. I don't think she's alone in her feelings.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board? Seeing none, we move on to our administrative reports. We have one report tonight, which is on our strategic plan. Mike?
And I would like to invite, I'm not sure who all is speaking, Renee, and Rob Wegley, and Kate Kavanaugh, and Amy Pergalsky, I got it right there, and Jeff McHugh.
Hi, good evening, everyone. It's so great to be here with all of you, and right now, this is an exciting time to share some of the highlights of the amazing work of our amazing organization and teachers and staff. And we are excited to share the 2019-2020 strategic plan and highlight a few details. So just for background, the strategic plan is developed in collaboration with administrators, ed committee, and staff. And every year, strategic plan builds off of the prior year's plan and starts with conversation in the spring. So Rob is going to talk to us about, a little bit about, our plan.
Hi, I'm Rob Wegley. I'm a member of Curriculum Coordination Committee, and I am a teacher leader on that committee. The CCC essentially influences the strategic plan, the implementation of that, and the direction of that plan itself. The work for the 1920 strategic plan began last spring on CCC, where the 10 teachers, two parents, and three administrators joined together to spend time collaborating and thinking through the implementation, as well as the impact of the strategic plan.
And ultimately, over the last three years, we've worked to create communication structures for enhanced voice and feedback on the strategic plan. The way CCC is structured is one way to do this, and CCC members are one conduit between the strategic plan and the day-to-day reality. During the month of November and December, the building-level leadership teams will be reviewing the initiatives and implementations for continued discussion, and tonight, we're going to be highlighting three components: co-teaching, digital tools, and research and development of a Word structure program plan.
Good evening. Amy Pergalsky and I are going to share a little bit about the work that we're doing in the area of co-teaching. Co-teaching is one vehicle that we have been implementing over the past couple of years to implement inclusive practices in supporting all students in the general education setting. Our first goal is around developing effective co-teaching partnerships. So we really want to move beyond just presence of a special education teacher in the classroom to really the special education teacher and general education teacher planning, instructing, problem-solving, and processing how instruction is going together. Our second goal is around increasing the usage of various co-teaching models. And in that one, we're really wanting to increase the different models that incorporate both teachers in leading instruction. One of the most beneficial pieces of co-teaching is that you have more opportunities to provide smaller group instruction, decreasing the ratio of students to teachers, and so we want to make sure that we're really implementing those models that allow us to do that. Amy's going to talk a little bit about our action steps that are getting us to meeting our goals.
Hi, I'm Amy Pergalsky. I'm a learning behavior specialist at Cherokee, and I've been very involved in the co-teaching process in our district. There are a couple of action steps that we've taken in the past year that have helped us move towards our goals. So one of those is creating a district handbook. Coming into this year, a team of teachers and administrators created a co-teaching handbook that has some guidelines, resources, and information to support the co-teaching partnerships. We also have had some summer academy courses. The administration received feedback about teachers needing more time before the school year starts to connect with their co-teacher. So we developed a class called Launching the Co-Talk Classroom, where co-teaching partnerships were able to prepare for the school year ahead and build their relationships, and there was a high level of participation, and it was very successful. This year, we're also partnering with Paula Kluth, who specializes in co-teaching and inclusion, and we have, all co-teaching partnerships have attended her two-day training, where we have focused on inclusive practices, co-teaching. We're all learning the similar language and models, and it's also allowing time for collaboration and discussion among co-teachers. And then there are some ongoing walkthroughs with administration and fellow co-teachers, where we're popping into other Co-Talk classrooms and learning from each other through observation. And our co-teaching has really evolved over the last several years, and we're excited to see where it will go.
Great, thank you. And right now, an exciting thing to think about, some of our digital tools, and this is to transform learning. So ultimately, we are looking at two things tonight: Schoology, the implementation of Schoology at the middle school, and then also iPads, which have been implemented in K1, 2, and then this year in 5th grade. So there have been some amazing things going on. I was going to be presenting with Nikki, because Nikki was a Schoology ambassador, representative, and also one of the teachers on the 5th grade team, doing amazing things with the iPads. I'm not going to speak, but she created a video for us tonight because she was unable to be here. So without further ado, I'm going to let Nikki's classroom and her students do the
Schoology really helps, and it's kind of like a one-stop shop for everything you need, because like, all of your teachers have it, so there is everything there. And there's like different sections, so there's like subsections for almost everything, so you can get to work really easily.
All right. Schoology has helped me communicate with my teachers when I'm at home. Like, one time, for math, I forgot my book, so I had to email my teacher and say I might not have my homework done, but I did end up getting it done. It also helps me communicate with my teachers when I need, like, when I have questions. And it's easier to submit assignments instead of like, so they don't get lost, and like, suddenly they're not turned in if you like put it in like, a stack of papers, like, it will fall out, but like, in Schoology, it just like stays in the folder or wherever it goes. Using the iPads for book talks is really helpful, because you can get a lot of feedback from the teachers, and it's a lot easier than the teacher just coming for a little bit of it, and then, so the teacher can hear all of your book talk, and you can make sure your group can say everything. It's a lot easier for you guys, for the group, to make sure everyone's working and taking charge and making sure everyone's saying stuff, instead of having the teacher come over and tell you that.
Good job.
So, on the iPad, there are like, instead of like, just going on to one thing, like the 4th grade, 3rd and 2nd, I could only use SISA, but now you use Schoology, and you have a lot of different apps that you can use to like, turn in something, like iMovie and Clips. Clips are something for presentation and lets you like humor shine. But like, if you're doing something like making a parody to a music video, you could, you would use iMovie, because they have a green screen app now, so you could use the green screen, and then you could basically create like, the video, and then behind you, you could have like, your custom background. So, it's, the iPads are different than the Chromebooks, because like, when you're doing assessments or tests or something, you have more voices, instead of just doing like, a doc or a slide on the Chromebook, or what you want to do. You could do like, green screen, or like, different things, instead of just doing slide and like, a doc or something like you used to have to do on the Chromebook. You can have, like, I have more choices.
And ultimately, the combination of these amazing tools and our hard work of our teachers has helped prepare our students to become more future-ready learners. And Jeff will talk to us about the Word study program.
So the final component of the strategic plan we'd like to share is Word study. And by Word study, we're talking about phonics, vocabulary, spelling, and we're bringing grammar into this too, this year. And to let you know where this came from, I'm going to let Lisa Schmidt, one of our phenomenal reading specialists, talk.
Yes, my name is Lisa Schmidt. I'm the reading specialist at Sheridan, also a member of CCC. So thinking about where my role is and explaining this tonight, it was thinking about CCC, representing the English Language Arts Committee, which I was on two years ago when we started building our Reading Language Art Program, down to the reading specialist team that have talked and worked with Word work forever. But really, this comes from the need of teachers at my building, at a table, at a meeting, talking to teachers of what, from kindergarten to 3rd grade. What are the greatest needs right now, moving forward? We feel so solid with our reading and writing programs, and the teachers maybe know so much about it that that's how they know they're missing this link of, with the grammar and the structure and the Word study. So we're looking into investigating into, at this point, three formal programs. Teachers actually picked up kits and are ready to go. Some of the buildings actually have already started the beginning of the year with units of study, phonics, and they're going to move forward to look into some other...hoping by the end of the spring, they will all have seen all three programs. So it's, we're looking at a benchmark reading phonics program, units of study, which is part of the Lucy Hawkins, and the last one is Fountain Spanell, which we've had in this three years as a tool, as a, you know, like, a piece of a recipe for Word work in our buildings, but it's, you know, like, a 2003-dated version, so now they're looking at piloting one of the newer versions out.
So we don't know how this is going to wind up. From the K4 standpoint, we're looking at everything we have, everything out there we know is good, and we're basically asking the teachers, "Help us figure out what's going to work." And at the 5'8" level, we'll be coming to the ELA teachers in their pullouts. They've talked about grammar and vocabulary, and asking them, "What are some of the things you think are good to really drive where we're going?" So we might, in the spring, be up here with a recommendation, asking to purchase materials, and we might not. It might not be until next year. But this is truly going to be a ground-up. The teachers are going to inform us, "This is what's the best fit for our kids right now," because all the stuff we're looking at is research-based, and it's fabulous, but what's the best fit for our kids? And it's, our teachers have just taken that on, and they're happy to try things out, and they'll inform us, so to be continued. Any questions about any of these three areas, or anything else strategic plan-related?
Board members, questions for any of those folks on the strategic plan?
Yes, I've got a few, at different levels. So, one for the presentation, one more for the administration, and one for the board in general, because we didn't get the chance to talk about- because we didn't get a chance to talk about this tonight in our workshop. But I was going to ask if there's a prioritization. There's, there's a, there's a lot of stuff in here, a lot of great stuff in here. Is, I was going to ask, you know, do you prioritize any of these things relative to this? But I'm sure the answer is going to be, they're all important. So the prioritization is yes, right? The answer will be yes. But you, Jeff, and Kate, and Renee, you've got a lot of stuff on your plate over the next year relative to implementing a wide variety of things. Are there any of these objectives or milestone-specifics, action steps, that you would say, we need to have this done, and we need to have this done right this year? That really would, so for example, I'm looking at, under instruction, you've got a lot of really good stuff in here, but I get down at the bottom and it says, "Program Evaluation of Bridges." That seems pretty important to me, but it's not up there. So that kind of, is there certain things that kind of rise to the top, like, yeah, we got to get this right this year?
I have my thoughts. I don't want to speak for everybody on the team. I, I think, yes, everything is important. And I think from a priority standpoint, it's really how we're, some of these are going to take longer than others. So the Bridges Evaluation, where we are, last year was year one of that, and this year, we're doing a lot of work with teachers in terms of coming up with ways to differentiate, to supplement Bridges. But it's going to be ongoing this year, and we'll have to revisit it at the end of this year to see if there's even more we'll need to do. But I, I'd say from my standpoint, the things on my plate, Word Study is a really big one, because it's going to impact everybody K-8. This is going to take a lot of time and meetings and conversations with teachers and supports. Some of the other things are really important on here. They're just not going to take as much time. But when I'm thinking about prioritizing, they all are important. I think it's down to prioritizing, where do we spend our time? And that's where, in some of these, from, from my standpoint, Word Study is a big one, but the Bridges one is a big one too. How about?
And I was just going to jump in to say that a lot of it is just planning and preparation and working with small groups of teachers that are willing to be some of the lead teachers on these things to investigate. We still are holding true to our two-year plan of some of those items, like the LMS, the School-A-G, the iPads, SEL, co-teaching, CHAMPs. So things like that, those are the things that are going to probably be finished and highest priority for the end of this school year in the spring of 2020. A lot of the other things on the strategic plan, it's our planning on the back end with different groups and committees. Does that help answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
I would also ask that, for, for my edification, when I read through this, I asked, a lot of times I ask the question, why? So why is this a priority? Now, you could say, well, it's our milestone, right? But that's a pretty high-level why. I would love to see some more detail, or at least as you guys discuss through these things, you know, why is this a priority for this year? Why did this make the radar for this year? Is it, there's changes in the legislature that we have to implement, you know, civics or a digital curriculum? Okay, well, that, that's important to understand why that made the list and why something else may not have. So I, you know, it'd be nice to have that level of specificity, and if we want to share this with the general public too, with parents, I'm sure would want to know. You know, Doug on it, I've, you know, I really want this to occur. Why didn't this make the list? It would be helpful. It'd be great to hear that kind of understanding and reasoning from a board perspective, but I also think from a public perspective. So, but the work itself you guys do is fantastic. So thank you.
Absolutely. Yep. Other questions?
Well, then I have a question relative to talent, and I brought this up with Mike. The, the way we structured the, the strategic plan currently, and the way we structured our mission, vision, milestones, is very curricular and instruction-based, which is great. That's fine. But it then focuses on what goes on within the buildings. And I, I, if I'm looking at it from a district-wide perspective, we've got to incorporate more than just that, because when we manage the district, we're managing other aspects of the district. We're managing the finances of the district. We're managing the technology in the district, the communication, and so forth. So specifically under talent, the work we're doing with the Compensation Committee, which I have a vested interest in, but we're doing a lot of good work relative to trying to understand how we retain, attract and retain talent from an administrative staff perspective, not just from a teacher perspective. And I would love to see something like that potentially added in to show that it's more than just what we're doing in the building, but we're doing in the district as a whole. I'd also love to see something about finance added as well, as we talk about how we manage the district, but that's a broader conversation regarding our whole mission, vision, milestones. Because currently, we don't have a milestone specifically that articulates the financial stewardship of this district and what our philosophy and strategies are relative to managing our finances. Personally, I think that should be in there, but that's a conversation for another time, and that's what I hope to get to at a future workshop. So. But for this, this is great. I mean, it's a lot of stuff, a lot of good stuff, but I appreciate all the hard work you guys do, because it, you articulate it well enough that a layperson like me can look at this and go, I see what they're focused on this year. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
Other questions from board members? I have one. Jeff, Renee, maybe. You talked about some pretty cool things and some pretty big things, School-A-G, iPads, Word Study, Bridges. And my question is a little bit about how you evaluate. I love the fact that you said that you're piloting and you're getting direct teacher input. They're certainly the, the feet on the street. And I'm assuming they're giving you sort of their experiences. I guess I'm asking, how do you evaluate in whatever objective way? How do you take that input? Do you pair that with objective data that you're gathering? What does the data look like? Are you comparing it against the baseline? Pick any one of them, and there's a baseline. So can you talk a little bit about how the evaluation process actually occurs?
I'll just speak first to some of the digital tools and the different initiatives we have going on under what we would kind of consider some of those, both environment milestones, but also under the whole inquiry and student-driven learning initiatives. So they really fall under there in that how is, a lot of the data we're collecting right now, we collect some of it in baseline and benchmark data that we've asked teachers to fill out at the beginning of the year, and thank you for always doing that for us. It gives us a nice baseline. It's qualitative, it's quantitative. Some of the questions that I'm putting together for a thought exchange that will go out to parents, it will ask about the perceived effectiveness of some of the, the different items on the plan, like iPads and some of the inquiry initiatives and those strategies. Just what is the perceived effectiveness of that on student empowerment? So it is going to be a combination of some Likert scale questions through surveys and qualitative data through a thought exchange. So for a lot of my work, it comes from the district baseline survey, and then also end-of-year survey that we compare, and then a lot of the qualitative data that we're hoping to collect, just to inform future decisions for some of those initiatives. And also with the inquiry and the student-driven initiatives, we just, I mean, Jeff will talk about it with the assessment report. But so many great things, especially happening in the science data. State's trending down, District 67 is trending up. So for four years, we've trended up, whereas the state has trended down. So those are the sorts of pieces of data that we're looking at.
I can say also, just in the area of co-teaching, the survey data was very important. So we had that at the beginning of the school year to look at what kind of co-teaching partnerships were going on and the models that were being used. But the other piece is doing some walkthroughs and looking at what we're seeing as far as the implementation of different models across the buildings, and then staff feedback. So the district-level committee that was represented across all of the buildings, at the end of last year, I met with whoever was interested and got feedback from them as far as, how are things going? Do we need to make modifications to the handbook? What other training do you need? And that's what really drove some of the work that was done this summer, and then the Paula Kluth training that all the partnerships went to this year. So I find their feedback really important as far as driving the work that we're doing.
Thank you.
I have an observation that I wanted to share. Amy, last year, I was in your classroom. We had a Board of Ed Education Meeting and had board members, two of whom I think went to Cherokee and two went to Everett, if I remember correctly. But I was in your room. You were co-teaching with Annette Miller, if I'm not mistaken. And I took a video, three short videos, used them in this board room, as a matter of fact, to demonstrate what co-teaching should look like. And I've probably shown that video to 1,500 people since, because it is the most amazing demonstration on why this is good for every kid in the classroom. And one of the questions I ask when I show these short videos is, can you figure out which one of these teachers is Gen.Ed and which one is not Gen.Ed? Who is the specialist here, the special ed support for specific students? But as it turns out, it's every student in the classroom. And one of the, one of the other videos was, you were working with a student, and a brief clip, and any typical viewer, if they knew that you were the special ed teacher in the classroom, would say she's working with a student that needs special support. And it was a kid that was, you, he was particularly, particularly skilled in whatever it was you were assessing, did not receive special ed services, and you're working on him to enrich his experience in the classroom. It was just a textbook example of why we should be proud of the work you guys are doing. So thank you.
Thank you all for your hard work on the strategic plan. It's fantastic. Thank you. We now move on to Board Committee Reports. We start off with the Board of Ed Committee chaired by Suzanne Sands.
We have not met since our last meeting, but we will be meeting on Thursday in two days at noon here in the West Campus Building.
Thanks, Suzanne. We move on to Board Finance and Operations chaired by Rob Lemke.
Finance and Operations has not met. We will be meeting somewhere over here on December 10th at 7:30 in the morning.
Thank you, Rob. We move to the Policy Committee chaired by Jeff Volker.
The Policy Committee has not met since our last meeting. However, Eileen Fowler and I sat in on a webinar regarding an upcoming press release. So we are trying to get a joint meeting with the 115 Policy Committee scheduled for early December. We have been alerted that this could be the largest press packet ever put out. So expect some interesting and fun changes or updates to policies coming in the next two months.
Thanks, Jeff. We move to the Compensation Committee, also chaired by Jeff Volker.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, the Policy Committee met jointly with the District 115, I'm sorry, Policy Committee. The Compensation Committee met jointly with the District 115 Compensation Committee on Monday, November 11th. Again, I want to reiterate how important it is and how excited I am that the 115 folks have joined us. I think it's a, it's really been adding to our discussions. The quick highlights, my full packet, my full report is in the board packet, but the highlights are, back in 2014, an original iteration of a Compensation Committee recommended a variety of what we called peer districts in terms of understanding our salary ranges for comparing compensation data. At the time, those, for shared service purposes, those peer districts consisted only of single-unit high school districts, and only those districts that were located within 25 miles of Lake Forest and Lake Bluff. In conversations with our committee this past month, we agreed that we need to expand that definition and look at unit districts as well as just high school districts. And unit districts are those that are K through 12 and not just 9 through 12. And we also agreed that we should be looking at districts that are in the Chicagoland area, maybe not just within the 25-mile limit, but those that have similar demographical require, you know, situations in terms of ACT, or ACT and SAT scores, average home sales and things like that. So we've expanded our peer district list to now include Barrington, Lake Zurich, Geneva, Elmhurst, Batavia, and then from a high school-only perspective, Hinsdale. So we've increased the number of districts that we'll be using for comparison purposes. We also started doing some interviewing of shared service roles. I had the pleasure of chatting with Mr. Simic for an extended period of time about his role and what we call redundant activities of having to manage multiple boards and multiple districts. It was enlightening, and Mike did a great job of helping us kind of get down to a level of specificity and detail around what activities and how much time is devoted to those activities. Again, our hope is trying to understand how a shared service environment affects workload for our shared service administrators. So he started that process. We also talked with Brittany Chardis, who's now over at Stevenson, relative to her former role as Director of Business Services, and she was very helpful, and we'll talk with her again. But I'd like to thank Rebecca for her help in putting together a list of those roles and activities and what we believe are some of the redundant tasks that are done as a result of being in a shared service environment. We will be conducting the rest of the interviews over the next month in time for our next meeting. And then lastly, we agreed as a committee to move down parallel paths jointly. The first path being to continue our work relative to interviewing folks and getting better clarity on redundant tasks. Second of all, I'm going to be talking to a couple potential consultants about taking a look at shared services in general. One of the concerns of the committee was, let's not focus entirely on how we compensate for a particular role if that role is not as efficient as it could or should be. So we need to be working not only in terms of a compensation perspective, but also ensuring that the roles that we have in place are indeed the right roles, and that we haven't allowed shared service to become too inefficient, even though it saves us money. Perhaps we've cut things, places, cut positions in places that now creates an overburden, too much of a burden on a particular role, and so why compensate that? Why not just get the right role in place in the first place? So we're going to go down both of those paths. I have on my calendar to talk to a couple of different consultants, and we'll be doing that in the near future. That's it. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 16th here at the West Campus. Again, we'll be meeting jointly with 115. Thank you very much.
Questions or comments for the Compensation Committee? Thank you, Jeff. We now move to Liaison Reports. First up is NSSED, Suzanne.
So NSSED met on November 13th, and there were a lot of amazing things going on over there that were talked about at that meeting. And you can read all about that in my report that I submitted. But one of the things that happened at that meeting was, this video was shown by Dr. Kurt Schneider. One of the things that he does at all of our board meetings is to do some professional development of the board. And so I wanted to share this piece with you. After watching this piece, I went on to watch many other pieces that this educator has made, and I'll let her speak for herself, but I think it's very well explained.
Welcome to Five More Minutes. Use school videos in five minutes or less to support the teaching and learning of all students. I'm your host, Shelley Moore. Today's topic is the evolution of inclusion. Okay, so you remember the dots? I know, I know, I know. I've shown you these before. But one colleague of mine suggested to me once, he goes, what if we didn't look at these as different concepts that we compare to each other, but instead as an evolution of time? It was totally brilliant. Now, we can look at this timeline through the lens of any marginalized population, but to understand this timeline from the inclusion and disability perspective, we have to go back in time a little bit. Many of us know or are connected to someone who experienced institutionalization. It was even recommended to families by doctors. Although British Columbia was the first province in Canada to close down their institutions, there are still individuals living in these conditions across Canada today. The institutionalization movement is an example of exclusion. It separated individuals with disabilities from their families without choice. But the disability rights movement over the past 50 years, with the hard work of some incredible self-advocates and families, and maybe a little help from Rolando Rivera, pushed communities to shift so that individuals of all abilities were welcomed and living in the same settings as their family and friends. This shift from institutions to communities, this was the start of the inclusive evolution. We have movement, but can we do better? Although many individuals are no longer excluded from their families and communities, they were, and let's be honest, they still are. Expected to attend segregated schools or self-contained special education programs that are totally separate from the rest of the school community. And so parents started to ask some very good questions. You see, children with disabilities have siblings without disabilities, and families wanted all their kids to have equitable access to community-based education together. Kids started to be integrated into classrooms with their peers. They're in math together. They're in gym class together. They're eating lunch together. Kids are together. This is better. The shift from segregated to integrated schools and classrooms, this is the next step in the evolution of inclusion. We have movement, but can we do better? Well, this is where things get tricky, because integration, it doesn't take long to realize that just being together, it's not enough. Although in the same classroom, students with disabilities are often just that. They're physically in the classroom. They may sometimes have parallel activities, but mostly it's loosely connected classroom tasks. Now, you don't need me to tell you that just physically sharing space and time is enough to make you feel like you belong in a community. I mean, come on, there are Disney movies made about this. Breathing the same air is not enough. Do you remember the Titans? I do. The evolution from integration to inclusion is now the topic of many conversations in communities and schools around the world. How do we support individuals to be meaningfully included and not just physically integrated? It's not just about where kids go in their day, but why? What is the purpose to the places that they go? It's now school-based teams and staff that are asking questions about how to do this. How can we support purposeful and meaningful placements for kids with disabilities? In inclusive classrooms and schools, students aren't just present, but they're In inclusive classrooms and schools, students aren't just present, but they have roles and responsibilities in their classrooms and also meaningfully connecting to their peers. This is inclusion. So, there you have it, my friends. A brief history of inclusion in about five minutes. If this is interesting to you, though, definitely investigate your local history as well, because every community is in a different place in this journey, and it's so valuable to know where we've come from. The other thing, though, is looking at these visuals as a timeline. It really helped me to shift my own thinking from which bubble am I at or not at, and shift to more of a where are we now in our inclusive journey and what's our next step. All of a sudden, the goal of inclusion becomes action-oriented and just feels so much more possible. We may not all be at the same place in the journey, but we can all move forward. We can do better. And so, this is the question I'm going to leave you with today. Can we still do better? Do you think there's another evolution in inclusion? What might that be? How can we inch even more forward to make inclusion even better? Thanks, Geraldo.
That concludes my report for NSSED.
Thank you Suzanne. Questions or comments from board members regarding NSSED? Thank you. We move on to Legislative Liaison. Alice. Your mic's not working?
Can you use Mr. Englund's?
Hi, so there's, is this better? Thanks. Okay, there's a couple of things at the state level that of interest to bring up, and this is in the report. The fall veto session is actually adjourned until January 28th, 2020. Something noteworthy, though, is Senate President John Colleton has announced he'll be retiring in January, and this will start the political maneuvering among senators who wish to replace him. One thing of interest that affects all of us is there is a state bill, 533, that will amend the Time Standardization Act, which provides a daylight savings time shall be the year-round standard time of the entire state of Illinois. So, it's been approved by the Senate, and now it's in the House Rules Committee. So, that is on the horizon. And then, just as a recap, this upcoming week is the Illinois Association of School Boards' annual meeting, and I will be the delegate from Lake Forest representing our school District 67. There are four resolutions that I will be voting no to based upon our last school board meeting where we discussed the following, and again, I will be voting no on these. Student safety, which would allow local boards the option of having voluntary employees carry concealed firearms. School safety grant program, which would allow school districts to hire retired police officers as school security personnel who could carry a weapon on school grounds. School district police force, which would allow local school districts to establish their own police forces with all the duties and responsibilities of local law enforcement. And the last one I will be voting no on behalf of our district is the school safety traffic zones, which would allow increased traffic calming measures in front of all schools, including 20 mile-per-hour speed limits within one block of schools, striping speed bumps, and removing the designation of during school hours. Thank you.
Thank you, Alice, and thank you for your service at that conference. Any questions for Alice regarding Legislative Liaison? Seeing none, we move on to our next Liaison Report, Spirit of 67, Rich.
I wanted to thank Suzanne for her bringing that topic up to the community, and I want to thank Mike Simic, who has discussed with me more inclusion into integration, which is something that's personal to me and Mike has also experienced. So, I think that is something that we are also, as a district, on the cutting edge of moving forward with that. Back to the task at hand, the Spirit raised over 100,000 with the Ladies Night Out and Raise Your Hands for Education online auction. The grant applications deadline is January 30th, and the home tour planning is underway and will take place on May 7th, 2020. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Any questions for Rich regarding the Spirit of 67 Foundation? Move on to the Executive APT, Suzanne.
The Executive APT Board Meeting was also on November 13th. There was a lot actually discussed at that meeting, a lot of exciting things going on at the buildings. A few things to highlight is that we have had visiting authors in the, a visiting author in the elementary schools who was apparently very well-received. The Barrel of Monkeys program, which has been funded by the Spirit, both programs actually funded by the Spirit, has also been in the building, and I believe the resulting performance from them is coming up shortly. The district-wide HUGS food drive was a huge success this year. Last year's donations were reported, they were able to put together about 250 mealbags, and this year they were able to put together 530 mealbags with the food collected. And additionally, there was $1,000 in gift cards that were donated that can be used by the pantries to provide turkeys for families. So, really impressive community support for that effort. All the fine arts programming for the district and the visiting scientists are all being scheduled. Visiting scientist is happening in January. Again, those are things that are run by the APT but funded through the Spirit of 67. So, thank you to both organizations for bringing all of these great things to our children, and the rest can be read in my report.
Thanks Suzanne. Any questions for Suzanne regarding the Executive APT? Are there any other Liaison Reports that I may have missed? Seeing none, we move to our second public participation item on the agenda. This time is generally intended for comments relating to the Board Committee Reports and Liaison Reports, which we just heard, and any new business that's not been addressed. Same procedures which I outlined for our first public comment period remain in effect here also. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the Board? Seeing none, we move on to our action items. First action item is the approval of the 2019 tentative tax levy. May I have a motion to approve the 2019 tentative tax levy? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? I would start by asking our CFO to give us a brief overview of the tax levy, both for the Board as well as the public's understanding.
I am happy to. Thank you. Annually, the Board of Education is asked to consider and adopt a tax levy to fund district operations. To put this in context, the property taxes do cover about 84% of our total revenues for each year. There's two main components. If Jordan can flip to the next part that's related to this formula. We are limited to an annual increase on existing property of CPI, which for this particular tax year is 1.9%. A little hard to see in the green on the screen, but that is a projected increase of $636,000 and change from existing property. The second main component of the property tax law is new property. New property within District 67 boundaries for this tax year was $19.3 million of new construction. I can tell you that is an extremely high number for our district. Our average is more near $10 million per year, so this is unusually high year. That additional new property will add an additional $273,000 to our property taxes received. The third component really is a small component. It's really debt service that the Board has previously approved, but annually, we do ask for that to be put on the tax rolls to pay for that debt service that we've previously approved. So, when you put those three components, the two main components and the debt service together, we project projected tax revenue growth of $915,000. So, kind of breaking this down into perspective, to do simple math on a $1 million home, so a home that has a fair market value of $1 million, which I understand from the real estate agent in the room that that's fairly accurate to represent an average home in the area, a 1.9% increase to that existing property would be approximately $66 for the year. Now, keep in mind, that is simple math, so it does matter. We can only collect 1.9 from all the property together. Individual properties will increase or decrease above or below that 1.9% based on how the value of your home was in relation to other homes in your area. So, if your home value increased at a higher rate than, let's say, a neighbor's house, your rate would go up more than that $66, and theirs would go down. So, it's in total that we capture that 1.9% increase. This is the tentative levy, meaning that the Board approves this tonight, and then they will adopt a final levy in December. So, there is time in between for any questions, comments, or concerns, and we'll be happy to address them at the next meeting.
Thanks Jen. Questions or comments from board members regarding the action item to approve the 2019 tentative tax levy? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please? Eileen.
Mr. John?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Englund?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Volker?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Our next item is regarding the science labs. May I have a motion to approve the science lab bid in the amount of $3,464,935?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? I'll start off by asking Renee to talk a little bit about the science labs with a few pictures, and then Jen to follow up on a little bit on the financing, and then open up to Board questions thereafter.
Hi, yes. Again, exciting work, really exciting. Thrilled to have you guys here to hear a little bit about this. I know Jordan is just going to airplay some of the designs, but ultimately, we've got some exciting work that is hopefully going to pass, and we've got something on the 5-6 side and then the 7-8 side. And so, right here, this, I believe, is the 7-8, yep, 7-8 side, and what we are going to hopefully do is we're going to take the existing labs right now, kind of tear down the walls and turn it into a completely brand-new, something that's never been done anywhere, sort of a completely different learning space. So, the idea is that you'll see in the middle, there is a wall. I'm going to just come over here and point to it really quickly. Oh, thank you. The amazing ability of iPads. But exactly right there, Jordan knows what I'm talking about. That's a wall. That wall is actually, with the push of a button, it is movable, just like in the Haskins. It can turn what is those two labs now into a completely big learning space. You could put all of your chemistry classes in there. Those are meant to be our chemistry labs. You might notice if you actually measured to scale that in-between part, Jordan, you know where I'm talking about, that is going to be our living room, and that is a little bit wider than it was before. It's made the walls our glass, and the idea is to really teach and learn without limits, without boundaries, just to go along with our mission statement. So, the whole idea of the glass there is that the teachers who are in the labs and the students that are working in that living room that we're calling it, that is going to be completely seamless. You'll be able to be working in there on furniture. There are even some higher, like pub table kind of areas for the kids to be working on, some furniture in there, a lot of technology to make the learning seamless. And then, the other side is the physics lab, and the physics lab will have some really exciting features as well, and those are our two subjects on the 7-8 side that they cover pretty intensely, chemistry and physics. And the earth science portion will be able to be taught in there as well, but those are the labs, not the classrooms, but those are the labs. And then, the 5-6 side is not transitioning that greatly, but the exciting part of that is that what we're doing is we're completely making all of the lab tables flexible. They don't have to be anchored to the floor anymore. They can move based on whatever the activity is. And then, you can see there's a pass-through that goes in between the two labs, the 5-6 and the 7-8 lab, and that's going to be like a little common learning area. It's going to be like a little gathering zone, a regeneration zone, and it's going to have all of those collaborative natures in it. And then upstairs, we're also going to have a fifth-grade sink for our fifth-grade science teachers up there as well. We're moving that into a common room right now. So, that's the basic idea behind it, but what I can say, and we talked a little bit about this earlier, is that we visited with the teachers. We started meeting in the summer of 2018. We've had a group of science teachers working diligently on this, constantly, every month, checking and designs going back and forth, feedback going back and forth. They've been extremely involved. And then, ultimately, we visited Deerfield, Northfield, and Lake Bluff, all with new labs, and we kind of took the best of all of the different labs. So, we're excited because we're, hopefully, what we're going to be able to present is something that's never been done before. So, we are really excited, and hopefully you guys will be too, and hopefully this will be an exciting action item tonight. So, thank you very much.
Thanks Renee. Don't run off yet. You got the fun part. I'm going to ask Jen to walk through the financial part, and then Board members may have questions for both of you.
I never get the fun part. On the finances, though, I will echo what Renee has said. We've been working on this for a very long time. So, this process did start as far as the bidding, and we started working on design with teachers and our architects well over a year, year and a half ago. We did put this project out to bid last February, and I would applaud the teachers. We told them to dream big, really, really big, and they did. And unfortunately, in February of 2019, they dreamt a little bigger than we could afford. So, we did go back and they worked diligently through the spring and summer and trying to decide what can we do to save the essence of the project? Let's not really lose what the cool things were, the things that were really going to transform that space, but on the other hand, what were some modifications could we make to bring this within scope? So, little tiny tweaks to, you know, the type of ceiling that we were using and things of that nature while leaving in the glass, the garage doors, the flexible space, all of those things that we thought were critical to the project. So, pleased to say that we did decide a couple of things. One, we went out to bid early, so we were on the street in October, which for school construction is an earlier timeframe. The second thing that we did is we also worked with the faculty to see whether or not it would even be possible to release those 7-8 labs, because there's a lot of work that needs to be done in them, including demoing all of the concrete in the floor as early as spring break. That really gave us an edge in the market. One, we rode in the street early, and two, we were able to release those classrooms early. So, we weren't competing in the same timeframe as other municipal projects necessarily. All in all, I will say that we did have nine different trade packages, and we received 55 total bids across those nine trades. So, that's an incredible response for our work, which ultimately, to get to, I guess, the top part here, which is the fact that we were able to reduce our price from the 2019 bid from 3.9 million to 3.46, which we believe is to be within the Board's parameter that was established in the spring. Even within that 3.46 number, there is some flexibility included in that, and we will continue to work with the teachers on things we call soft costs. That's the soft seating. That's picking out the stools. That's deciding what the living room really should include and we should utilize in that space. So, we do have still some flexibility within the 3.46 number. Also have a little bit of a slice of contingency in there, because as we've noted, as we've done construction throughout the district, these buildings are not new. So, every time you open up a wall or a floor or whatever it may be, every once in a while, you get surprised. So, we do have some contingency that hopefully if we run into any surprises, we can address them quickly, swiftly, and be ready to open up the school to an amazing grand opening in the fall.
Thank you Jen. Thank you Renee. Questions, comments from the Board members for anyone here?
Mike, I've got a comment. So, I did want to just explain to the community and the faculty who are here tonight why I enthusiastically support this project. As an engineer by education and as someone who's made their career in the software and technology industry, this is a transformative project that the district is about to undertake. I am also a taxpayer in the district, and we have been working on this my entire service on the Board of six months from now. I'm particularly excited to see how the administration has worked to take costs down on this by half a million dollars and live within the parameters that we've set. So, I'm very, very excited to say yes to this one.
Thanks Justin. Other questions or comments?
I just want to reiterate that the, there is, the contingency costs of $183,000 are essentially there to cover any potential overages. So, some percent, if not all theoretically, could be returned back or not spent if this is managed the way we hope it's managed.
That's correct. Every dollar spent on the contingency has to be approved in writing by the district, and I would say knock on wood, but every project I've done here, we've returned and not spent all of those funds.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions from Board members? I've got a comment and a question. There's a number of things that I love about this project. I love STEM personally, and I love science, so that fits nicely with me. Beyond that, it is in direct support of our vision of our district. We have six milestones. One of them is reimagining workspaces, and clearly, this is reimagining workspaces. So, thank you on that. I love that there was teacher input, and it was, to some degree, teacher-designed. The teachers know best what we need, and I really appreciate that. I love that the money came down. I love that you dreamed big. I love that you dreamed big, and then we were able to keep the essence of it and save almost half a million dollars. And I also love, and this gets to my question, the flexibility of being able to start the demo in spring break. Traditionally, we only do things over the summer, uh, which, which has been one of my pet peeves that we've talked about many times. So, I thank you to the teachers that are somewhat allowing us to, to do the demo, and a question that I have is, while I love that, I don't fully understand how we're doing that. So, um, can you speak to, we're gonna be demoing the labs in spring break, and then what are students gonna be using for labs the last couple of months of the school year?
Yes, so we spoke to, um, the, the teachers that would be involved, any teachers where their students might be displaced, the science teachers, and any teachers that their rooms were involved. And so, we have found different locations for them, and the science curriculum, the way that we've written it, they are not actually using chemicals, per se, that would require the usage of the chemistry lab, but instead, they would be using more hands-on activities. The curriculum would support that, where the teachers could do that in their actual classrooms, or perhaps in the Haskins. And I also wanted to mention one other thing. We did get student feedback as well for this process. We had a focus group last spring, so just to add that in.
Thank you. Well, I mentioned earlier tonight that this board is student-centric, and our school district is student-centric, and this project clearly is student-centric, so thank you all. Other comments or questions? Roll call vote, please. Eileen.
Mr. Borkowski.
Aye.
Mr. Fulker.
Aye.
Mrs. Levert.
Aye.
Mr. Chung.
Aye.
Mrs. Sands.
Aye.
Mr. Anglin.
Aye.
Dr. Lemke.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is the adoption of the resolution authorizing a supplemental property tax levy to pay the principal of and interest on outstanding limited tax, on outstanding limited bonds of the district. May I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. Comments or discussion? Jen, you want to give us 32nd overview of this?
Sure, this is really kind of that third component that was on that sheet. This is debt that the district has, uh, adopted several years ago, and annually, this is electing to put a portion of that onto the tax rolls to pay that debt service.
Perfect. Thank you. Questions or comments from board members regarding this item? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Fulker.
Aye.
Mrs. Levert.
Aye.
Mr. Anglin.
Aye.
Mrs. Sands.
Aye.
Dr. Lemke.
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski.
Aye.
Mr. Chung.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the human resources items as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you for the second. Questions or comments? Roll call vote, please, and the HR items.
Mrs. Levert.
Aye.
Mr. Anglin.
Aye.
Mr. Chung.
Aye.
Mrs. Sands.
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski.
Aye.
Mr. Fulker.
Aye.
Dr. Lemke.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We now move to the consent agenda. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. I will now read the items on the consent agenda. Approval of dispersment, payrolls, and financial statements dated October 2019. Minutes of irregular meeting and workshop dated October 29th, 2019. Minutes of an executive session dated October 29th, 2019. Does any board member wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.